We welcome you to the May 24, 2022 City Council. Boy, we've got a lot here. Seems like we maybe have a lot of things on the agenda tonight. But welcome. It's good to have you there. You know, I would ask maybe Claudia, how many do we have on Zoom?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven. So we've got a large group. So welcome, everyone. Or did she say seven?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Okay, somewhere in between. Twenty-six. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And one of the last times I can do this, we call our meeting to order. And Claudia, could you do a roll call of the council?
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counsel Gary.
Good evening.
Counsel Minkie, she is not here. Counsel Peralta.
Here.
Counsel President Drabkin.
Here.
Counsel Chenoweth is absent this evening, but he asked me to read this for him. Tonight is a very special meeting. We are saying goodbye to a man of ethics and integrity who has given tirelessly of himself to this community. Mayor Hill, you will be missed. We are also swearing in a new mayor and a new municipal judge. While change is never easy, I look forward to seeing what this change will bring to our community. Welcome aboard, mayor and judge. My apologies to not be there with you today, but I have a family engagement I just could not miss. Thank you, Counsel Chenoweth. And lastly, Mayor Hill.
Here. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Counselor Zach to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Zach. Well, our next item on the agenda this evening is oath of office. And we are going to be giving the oath to our new municipal court judge, Arnold Poole. And Arnold's here this evening. And so I'm going to have the Honorable Judge Synthony Kaufman Noble to lead the oath of office. And then Judge Noble, after you're done, if you'd stay up front, I have something to share with you. So go ahead. We'll have Anthony and our newest circuit court judge.
Judge Poole, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Arnold Poole.
I, Arnold Poole.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my abilities.
And I will, to the best of my abilities.
Perform the duties of the office of municipal court judge.
Perform the duties of the office of municipal court judge.
Of the city of McMinnville during my continuance therein. Of the city of McMinnville during my continuance therein. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'll take this from you. Stay up here with me. Come here. Well, we're excited to be able to be here tonight. And we have a partner that has been with us over a decade and just has worked and given to the city in so many ways. Her demeanor as a judge, her ability to bridge gaps and help people through difficult times is not only felt here at the city, but when you were able to become appointed by the governor to be the kind of interim circuit judge and then recently elected, we're so excited. And we'd really like to welcome you from that standpoint. You are, as I always say, a part of the fabric of this communication, of this community. And the other piece is the legacy and the heritage that you've added in this unique position adds to everything that we have. This evening, we have a token of our appreciation for your service to us. And I think the most important thing on here is inscribed at the very end is words of our late Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg that says, "Real change, enduring change, happens one step at a time." And we believe that. So thank you. Okay. Intrum, Mayor Drabkin, come down, will you? Let's make a deal. Yeah, it's a bit different on Zoom, isn't it? This evening is, it's emotional for me. You know, back in, I think it was 1993, when I was asked by the then-mayor Ed Gormley to serve on the Budget Committee, I didn't know what that really meant. I knew I liked finance. I knew I loved budgets, and I did that happily. But boy, that continued now for 29 years. We just went through my 29th budget. And then to be elected to go and serve on the City Council for 12 years and the last five and a half years as mayor has been a phenomenal opportunity for me. And it's with a real mixed emotion that I stand before you this evening at the last opportunity I have is serving as your mayor. But I look to my left, you're right, and we have someone that has been preparing for a lifetime, whether she knows it or not. I look over and I see Mom and Dad and how they have raised an individual that's an independent thinker, an individual that loves this community as much as any of us out in the audience today. I mean, loving this community, being a part of this community is what it's all about. And so, Remy, I'm very excited to be able to read the oath of office to you. I know I'm talking a little long, but this is the opportunity just to say how excited I am and how I know you're going to put your whole heart, soul, effort into where we're headed. So congratulations. So let me, if I may, and you may want to read along just answering the... This is May 24, 2022, and this is within the state of Oregon, Yamhill County, the city of McMinnville. And this is the oath of office for Remy Drabkin. I, Remy Drabkin.
I, Remy Drabkin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And that I will do the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of the office of interim mayor of the city of McMinnville.
Perform the duties of the office of interim mayor of the city of McMinnville.
During my continuance therein. So help me God.
During my continuance therein. So help me God.
And this will be signed, and she's sworn in. You have a new... This is interesting because we talked about, you've got a new interim mayor at the conclusion of this meeting, because I put that in my resignation. Why, I don't know. Now I could have sat back and just come out and sit with you guys. But I'm going to be doing a few things more this evening, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Mom and Dad, we want to get a picture. Come up here. We're not so formal this evening.
All right, eye contact up here, people. All right, on three. One.
I'm going to turn the mic over to interim mayor. It's all about agendas, isn't it? Okay, our next item on the agenda is item number four, and it's the life-saving award. So we will call on Chief, our fire chief, Chief Lippert, to come and present. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Mayor, I have Chief Hill here with me to help hand out our awards. The Fire Department recognizes a Chain of Survival Award from the American Heart Association and has several elements in order to qualify for that award. They have to contribute to the survival of a patient in cardiac arrest. This includes early recognition, activation of the EMS system, early CPR, rapid defibrillation, advanced resuscitation efforts by EMS, post-cardiac arrest care and recovery. Our crews train endlessly to perform their part in the chain of survival, and it truly takes a team approach to have successful outcomes. Our first recognition for this award is from January 30 response. We have dispatcher Samantha Charleston. Is she in? Can I ask you the names that I call it? If you're here, please come up front here so we can give you the coins. Captain Gary Steindorf, Jeremiah Gerber, Captain Melissa Skipper, Battalion Chief Lucas Slavens, Battalion Chief David Stovin, Jacob Perry, A.J. Gerhard, and Sergeant Steve McCartney from MPD. On January 30, 2022, crews were dispatched to an echolocal cardiac arrest, that's a bad one, with CPR in progress. Patient was 38-year-old male, found at home with his family present. Crews continued CPR and performed advanced life-saving efforts while working through rounds of medication, CPR, and respiratory assistance. The patient's cardiac rhythm changed and his pulse returned. Crews transported the patient to the hospital. The patient was able to fully recover and return home to his family. Go ahead. On our second recognition is from February 14. Cascade Steel staff responders Luke Carl, Forrest Crawford, Brian West, and Valerie Hutchins, dispatcher Angie Dorba, Captain Steindorf, Ryan Zollinger, Captain Skipper, Bruce Sams, Battalion Chief Slavens, engineer Brian Taylor, and Tanner Morton. Dave, you can step down on this one. Anybody name I didn't call on this one? We'll rotate them out. On February 14, 2022, crews were dispatched to Cascade Steel Mill for an echolocal cardiac arrest. Co-workers at Cascade Steel activated the onsite Rapid Response Team, who began performing life-saving efforts. The patient was found to be pulseless and apneic by on-scene EMS. CPR was started and the AED was attached. Shock was advised by the AED. CPR was continued. With the next AED check, the patient was found to have a pulse. Upon arrival, responders continuing advanced life support efforts and transported the patient via lifelike to a higher level of care. Patient was able to recover and return home. Thank you for your help. Thank you for your help. Appreciate it. Thank you for your help. Mr. Mayor?
We thank the Fire Department and those that participated in life-saving and their everyday efforts to protect this city. With that, we are now down to proclamation and recognition, and I will turn the mic over to interim mayor, Remy Drabkin. Remy?
I know. This is a proclamation to declare today Scott A. Hill Day in honor of Mayor Scott Hill. Whereas Mayor Hill, after winning in the November 2, 2004 general election, took office on January 1, 2005 as a city councillor. Whereas Mayor Hill was appointed McMinnville City's mayor on December 13, 2016, to fill the unexpired term of Mayor Rick Olson, and was elected as mayor at the November 8, 2016 general election. And whereas Mayor Hill has volunteered for and served 29 years on the City of McMinnville Budget Committee, 12 years on the City Council, including two years as council president and five and a half years as mayor. And whereas Mayor Hill has also served on the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency as chair, the McMinnville Water and Light Commission, Visit McMinnville, the Midwell Lamont Area Commission on Transportation, the Yamhill County Parkway Committee, and the Northwest Public Power Association, and participated in Yamhill County Leadership Roundtable, MAC Leadership Council Meetings, and Yamhill County Emergency Management Committee in his tenure as an elected official. And whereas Mayor Hill has extended his reach far beyond the city, sharing tested ideas that worked in McMinnville with other mayors, saving our main thoroughfares from rerouted heavy truck traffic, and representing the city and the Parkway Committee at the state legislature, to name a few. And whereas Mayor Hill served as inspiration for other leaders in the area through his dedication, involvement, passion, inquisitiveness, inclusiveness, and friendship. And whereas Mayor Hill's family has been a strong support system to him over his years of service. And whereas Mayor Hill's sense of service and commitment to the community is valued by the citizens of the city of McMinnville, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, interim mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim May 24, 2022, as Scott A. Hill Day. In the city of McMinnville and urge citizens to reflect on the passion and leadership of this caring and community-minded mayor who is leaving a legacy behind. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this 24th day of May, 2022.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And now, Mr. Mayor, if you will stay here, we have some gifts as well. First, from the city of McMinnville, yes, thank you, from the city of McMinnville and from the council of McMinnville as well, this plaque to honor and thank you.
Thank you, and it has the new logos all over it. I know you can't see that, but members of Visit McMinnville, you'll recognize this because you were part of that branding campaign, but this is phenomenal. Thank you.
Absolutely. And then, Donna, we also have a gift for you. Thank you so much for the 30-plus years of loaning your husband to the city of McMinnville. And we're not done, Mr. Mayor. Just two more. This is from my family and I, and I'm going to read this because I wrote it to read it, so. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your years of service. We recognize that you've dedicated tens of thousands of hours in volunteerism to our community. Thank you to your wife, Donna, and your children, who have supported you and loved you and made it possible for you to give that time. You have been a mentor and a friend. I will miss our weekly meetings, telephone calls, fist bumps, high fives, and hugs when we accomplish something great. I will strive to be as good of a cheerleader for everyone in the city as you have constantly been. Your encouragement gives us energy and inspires us to keep doing the hard work. Thank you for your leadership. My family and I are gifting you these grapevines as a reminder of this beautiful place that you've been instrumental in shaping. Now, we know you're not wine drinkers, so these are table grapes. And it's three different colors of table grapes, a red grape, a white grape, and a blue grape. It'll look that way, it really will. You've been a great partner with me in exemplifying good governance, and truly, you've become a good friend, and I will miss you. Mr. Towery?
Thank you, interim mayor Drabkin. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jeff Towery. I'm the city manager here in McMinnville. And for the last five and a half years, I've had the great pleasure of working with Mayor Hill almost on a daily basis. I want to thank Mayor Hill for your support, for your encouragement, and for your mentorship. We have a couple of gifts from our executive team. Hold on, one at a time, maybe. Hey Jenny, why don't you grab the book? So we have a coffee table book from Aaron Hansen Gallery, and each member of the executive team has inscribed that with a little note for Mayor Hill. And we have a print from Aaron Hansen Gallery that we hope Scott and Donna will find a place in your new home to hang. It is with honor and respect that the executive team of the city of McMinnville bestow these two gifts on Mayor Hill, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. And Jenny?
Here's our hug. Okay. Again, I've said probably enough this evening, but you know, as I look out in the congregation and the grouping that are here, so many dear friends, people that we've worked together. And it's amazing, when you work together for a common purpose, you can overcome any obstacle. And you know, I look out among you, and my heart is just softened because of our friendship. But most importantly, the working together we've done to continue this, what I call a bit of heaven here called McMinnville, the most livable city in the USA. Okay? That's a new one I put on. And you've heard, you know, I've lived in Portland, but this is my home. I'm moving, but this is my home. McMinnville is my home. You know, I just look at so many good people. Representative Noble, he and I have worked really hard together. We're so proud of what he's done. And I just look in the group and say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." And I've got maybe an hour more, and then we've got the new interim. So thank you, everyone.
I could keep my grapes up and you won't see me for the rest of the evening. We have to find out what's on TV tonight that took everybody away. That now takes us to item six on our agenda this evening, comments from our community members. And any individual in the audience that would like to address the council is able to do so at this point. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. We will limit the comments to three minutes. We will also recognize those in the civic hall. We will recognize those on Zoom and those that are on the phone. So Claudia, do we have anyone that would like to speak to the council this evening?
Yes, we'll start with Michael Wells on Zoom.
Michael, welcome.
Hello. I hope at least some of you remember me. I used to come to a lot of meetings, but I never stopped. I just do it this way. I just wanted to say that Mayor Hill, over five years ago, I started going to city council meetings initially because I just needed to get out of the house. But I kept coming back because I was impressed. A genuine service to the public was and still is very refreshing. One word that I kept hearing from you was transparency, and I very much appreciate that. You have actually inspired me to give back to my community. And I can only hope that we can follow in your footsteps of service, generosity, and kindness. So from just a normal citizen, Mayor Hill, I will miss you.
Thank you, Michael, and a dear friend to everyone on council. Thank you. Claudia?
Next, we have Mark Pitts.
Come on up, Mark. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to start by kind of echoing what the first speaker said and acknowledging the hard work that goes into the work the city council does. You hear lots of voices, and probably not all of them are happy voices, but want to communicate how much my wife and I enjoy living in McMinnville. And I would say, when the issue I'm going to speak to came up, I looked up who my councilman was and spoke to Zach Gary and told him at the time, and would say to you again, he was just a model of good listener, empathetic. He didn't take a position, but he gave good advice. And I just felt like I was very well-served by my council member, and so wanted to begin with that. And I'd say this also, this is a first-world problem. When I look at the news and think of things that are going on in other parts of the world, my problems are very small, but they are things that concern us, and so want to bring them to this group. The issue at hand is the issue of short-term rentals. And I guess I would just say, given how well McMinnville runs, I'm just very puzzled by the current short-term rental policy. I'm aware that there's at least the potential for the short-term rental policy to go on hiatus August 1. I guess I would say, why wait? I'd love it if it went on hiatus at the end of this meeting. Let me ask some questions quickly. I realize I have a short amount of time. I don't understand why the short-term rental policy is skewed toward the short-term rental homeowner when neighbors, at least in our neighborhood, oppose them, and when people like teachers and firefighters and police officers struggle to find affordable housing, and when affordable housing is such an easily acknowledged issue in McMinnville. and when affordable housing is such an easily acknowledged issue in McMinnville. The current policy, if homes were available for sale, would say the house on either side of my home could be turned into a short-term rental. That doesn't seem like a neighborhood-friendly policy to me at all. It seems like a short-term rental, aggressive, short-term rental-friendly policy. It doesn't seem neighborhood, intact neighborhood-friendly policy to me. A city official I spoke with when I asked how many petitions, how many applications had been denied, she said she really couldn't remember any petitions having been denied, and that the policy was not set up to deny petitions. And I'd say, I believe that. I think it is not set up to deny any petitions. And I guess my question would be, why is that the case? I'd also say the use of a management company to act as a buffer between unhappy neighbors and the city seems like it isn't serving the community members well. Second question is, I really don't understand why the policy is so short-term rental favorable when the need is moderate at best. Let me give you some statistics, and I'm just an amateur, but what I found looking at Rocket Homes, between March and April, home prices in McMinnville went up 9%. The days to sale decreased from 33 to 13. That says there's a mammoth demand for housing in McMinnville. At the same time, I looked at an industry site for short-term housing, and it said the homes in McMinnville that are available for short-term rentals had a 40% occupancy rate. Now, if I were a firefighter looking for a home in McMinnville, and it had been bought by somebody who was going to use it as a short-term rental, and I found out it had a 40% occupancy rate, and I couldn't buy it, I'd be aggravated. I'd be aggravated at that. I'd also say, I talked to Visit McMinnville, and they said, and I get the pandemic issue, but they said last year, in 2021, hotel occupancy rates were 63%. And they said that in the first three months of 2022, hotel occupancy rates were 59%. And so, I get it that we can speculate that those percentages will go up later in 2022 as the pandemic fades. But again, it bothers me that we would develop a policy on the basis of speculation when we know that there's a need for regular housing for people in the community right now. I guess another thing, and this is not a big issue, but it is an issue, I was puzzled when there've been lots and lots of hearings that you folks have gone through for retail on 18 that might happen in three or four years, and people are all up in arms about that, when they're not up in arms about the fact that they could have a commercial venture next door in a month. And so, a very real issue on the basis of a policy that's already in place could happen immediately, whereas what could happen out on the bypass could be a long way off. I'm also concerned that the policy we have in place right now is pretty minimal and vanilla when a lot of other communities are doing very creative things. For example, they're basing their, they're making short-term rentals available on actual need. They're monitoring short-term rental occupancy rates and hotel occupancy rates, and only opening up additional short-term rental capacity when there's a demonstrated need for additional capacity.
Thirty more seconds, all right.
Okay, absolutely. Also, they're considering zones. So, you have some zones that are wide open if they are near tourist areas, but other zones where, that are intact neighborhoods would have very, very strict criteria for additional short-term rentals. I'd also say, seems like it'd be a good idea if there's some folks who've been impacted by short-term rentals, who were a part of the committee that does the rewrite on the policy when that takes place. So, again, I'd say, thank you all so much for your work. The world will not change one way or the other on this, but policies are so good in so many other areas at McMinnville, I'd like to see additional attention given to this one.
Thank you, Mark. Claudia?
Next, we have Sam Justice.
Go ahead, Sam. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name's Sam Justice, 2360 Northwest Grenfell, here in McMinnville. I'm general counsel for McMinnville Water and Light. I actually intended to speak on your agenda item relating to sustainable resources.
Why don't you sit down so that Mike will pick you up, Sam?
So, I intended to speak on your agenda item relating to sustainable resources. I wasn't intending to be in the public comment portion, but I guess that's where I ended up.
Unless we're taking public comment during the agenda item?
I don't think we are taking public comment, so go ahead and address your concern.
So, I guess I already identified myself. Commission Chair Tankersley cannot be here this evening. He is currently out of town in Idaho, attending Northwest Public Power Association Annual Conference. And he asked that I attend to express the commission's continuing concern about the use of water and electric funds. Generally, these concerns were described in Mr. Dietz's letters to the city council in April, and generally reflect on jurisdictional control of the Water and Light Commission over money held in the water and electric funds. I just, I think he asked, and what he wanted me to express was that the commission continues to want to be helpful and cooperate with the council regarding these issues. He understands that the city council may be creating a working group to address some of the funding issues, and that he'd be happy to participate in such a working group. And I think he expressed to me that he expected that the commission would be available even in special meetings to take action in the next month if that was necessary to address funding issues of the city. With that, I guess that's all I really have to say. I know Mr. Dietz is here too, but I don't think he intends to say anything to the council. So, thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Sam, for coming, and thank you, John and Sam, for being here this evening. Both of you are dear friends and partners with the city, so thank you. Claudia?
That was everyone. I'll just do a call for anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public testimony.
So, anyone within the civic center that would like public testimony? Anyone on Zoom or the phone? Go ahead, Ron. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State Representative Ron Noble. And I would be remiss in not mentioning that 16 years ago this week is when I started my employment with the city as police chief, and you were council president. Watching you work is an inspiration. I know we're friends, you've been a mentor. And I just wanted to let people know here that not only have I watched you work tirelessly in the city, I've watched you work tirelessly representing the city in the state legislature on numerous issues, and it's made a huge impact. With that, one of those impacts, one of the, I believe, maybe the last thing on your agenda tonight deals with navigation centers. And I would urge you to vote yes on the resolution and enter into a contract with YCAP so that we can provide assistance to people who are homeless and provide the resources necessary for them to get back on their feet. And thank you very much for taking this on.
Thank you, Ron. And I'm going to step out of order a little bit, but if you don't like it, just fire me, okay? Ron, you have done such a heavy lift for our community and those in your district as a state representative. I was saddened when you were going for the Senate, or for the House, or for the Senate, but I also knew that you would have made such changes of transparency and inclusion and equity, all those things that we're striving to do. So, you may say that when we met, we came together very well, and we became dear friends and shared things with one another to make us both more effective. I know there's going to be more in store for you, because someone that has your leadership and your ability to bring people together and is as tireless as you are, you're going to be going on to other things. And so, as a council, and I think we would all, we wish you the very, very best. We take you in in the brotherhood that's ours, because you were one of us as a city employee, and you're just a great support. So, thank you so very much, Ron.
Well, those are very kind words. Thank you. But right now, McMinnville's loss is Utah's win, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ron. Hearing no other comments from our public, let's move to our public hearing this evening. And our public hearing is considering Resolution Number 2022-34, a resolution establishing a new affordable housing fund, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021, '22, and making supplemental appropriations. And so, I will ask if anyone on the council needs to declare a conflict of interest or reclusive themselves from this resolution. Hearing none, then I will turn our presentation over to our finance director, Jennifer.
Good evening. This resolution does a couple of things. It establishes a new affordable housing fund that will encompass both the revenues from the Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax, as well as group any grants associated with affordable housing efforts in the same spot in our financial footprint. The reason why we would like to do a supplemental budget in addition is because while the CET ordinance doesn't go in effect until July 1, we do have a grant that came in from the state of Oregon to support the Navigation Center, and it was not appropriated in your last budget for fiscal year 2022, because we didn't, we weren't aware of the scope and the definiteness of it at the time of the budget. So, that's why the supplemental appropriation is here. And we'd like to go ahead and put that grant in this new fund this year, because it is possible that we will spend some of that money before June 30, 2022.
Any questions to Jennifer?
Just one question, Jennifer. Is there any budgeting impact for the next fiscal year by having the expenditures on this start earlier than, you know, starting in this fiscal year?
No, it's, only grant funds would be spent this fiscal year in any, we know that we will not spend the entirety of the 1.5 million that has come in, but we do anticipate it's likely that a few hundred thousand dollars will exit our bank account before the year's end, so.
To support the YCAP.
Correct, the contracts with them, yeah. And Heather Richards knows more of the programmatic details if there are.
Yeah, so Mayor, if I could just add, and I wish I had spoken up when Representative Noble was still here, the 1.5 million dollar grant for the Navigation Center is actually due to his efforts at the state legislature to get us those funds to build that, so thank you to him for that. It's for construction. After your consideration tonight, if you give us the go-ahead, we are prepared to start contracting with several different special contractors to start moving that project forward. We are under a timeframe in which to get that constructed.
Thank you, Heather. Hearing no other comments, then I am going then to open the public hearing for comments. Public hearing is open, and I'll call on Claudia to call on anyone who has signed up to give us testimony this evening.
No one has pre-registered, but I did want to state for the record that Mark Davis submitted a public hearing comment for this agenda item. It wasn't included in the revised agenda that I sent out, so that's already in the record. And I would just call for anyone in the audience or Zoom if they would like to submit comment.
Seeing none, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. The next is our advice in informational items, and this is the opportunity to have reports from our counselors on committee and board assignments. And so, I'm thinking, Sal?
Point of order.
Go ahead.
Do we, are we not moving the resolution at this?
The resolution, I think, is later under the resolutions, Sal. Thank you. So, reports from counselors on committee and board assignments, and so we'll start with Sal and then move our way.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I had a really interesting weekend touring sites for proposed industrial agricultural facilities in Marion and Lynn Counties for council governments. These are industrial chicken facilities that would be put on the Sanium River and some of its tributaries would have a pretty significant effect on farming and agriculture, and I think it's likely that the council governments will take a position against those capos. And that we have no other, we didn't have a meeting between the last one and this one besides that. Tomorrow, we'll be discussing an attempt to get an additional 1.5 million in state revenue for planning services, $250,000 for each of the six regions in this year's emergency board funding to come up this September. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Adam.
YCOM and the Airport Commission haven't met since our last meeting, and you guys got briefed by the Fire District this evening, so that'll have, thank you.
Thank you. Let's run down to Zach.
Good evening. I have two updates. DEI AC, we had a two-part training from Deion Jordan on anti-bias, had a much longer title, but I'll shorten it to anti-bias. It was really phenomenal, good training, and went through that as kind of a tester-feeler out to go through that, get that training done, and then hopefully bring that to, as a recommendation to have council, as well as make that available to staff to go through that. It was a really, really good experience. And then Landscape Review Committee, we had two matters to weigh in on, more in the compliance issue on providing staff a good path forward. And then there was some continued discussion around code review, but otherwise, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Inter-Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report on Visit McMinnville. There are board positions open on Visit McMinnville currently. Two people have termed out, and they have been working on their new board advertisement, and Visit McMinnville was able to work with our DEI advisory committee on refining their advertisements. So, that was fantastic. They will not be having a July board meeting. And they are also investigating or working on, or working towards a DEI training for their board. And I have a lot of notes from the meetings. Their meetings are very, are wonderful. And they're very excited to be welcoming Lee McCollins to their team in July. And I want to tell you about Oregon 2022. I'm just not seeing my notes on it, but the, McMinnville will be hosting the tennis team? The French track and field team for Oregon 2022. Thank you for that. Yes, sports, yes, that's good. I think I got it. And then McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission meets tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. That meeting's open and available on Zoom. And then lastly, on committee assignments, I just want to put out two kind of pieces of information going forward for the council. One is that we'll be appointing a new council president at our next meeting, June 14. And then after the appointment of our new counselor at the end of June, I'll be redoing board assignments. I'm no longer eligible to serve on Visit McMinnville. Their bylaws require a counselor. The mayor will also be leaving the Parkway Committee, and so. the Parkway Committee, and so, and we'll have a new counselor. And I'm not just going to give those assignments away. It's an opportunity for us to look at where our passions, interests lie. So, if counselors will please take a moment, and if they have specific interest in a new committee, I would ask that you take advantage of the month of June to attend that committee meeting. And then let me know if you have a particular interest about movement to a, a new committee while we are doing some movements. It's a good time to reevaluate. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Just a couple of meetings I've been to. As you remember, at our last council meeting, we had a great discussion around the three-mile lane issues that we're, we're working through. And at the Yamhill County Bypass Meeting, Heather came and put a, as a specific of a, a program together for the, the bypass committee to help understand the true nature of that three-mile lane and the area plan that's associated with it. We had individuals from ODOT and had a very, a very good discussion. And I think we, we were able to really understand the issues before us with the bypass committee. And so, Heather, thank you for putting that together and kind of summarizing it down a little bit because we, we had a full agenda that day. And that's, that was the only meeting. We, as you know, MIRAC, we met in a joint meeting at our last commission meeting or our council meeting. And so, we didn't, that was our meeting for MWA or, or MIRAC. And so, you, you know what's happened from that perspective. Let's move over to department heads, and I'm just going to shoot around. Chief Libbert, any, anything to share with us this evening?
Nothing to report at this time, sir.
Chief Skels?
Mayor, as we, we spoke, just a, a quick, I know we privately spoke and I thanked you for your service to the city, but the department as a whole, I wanted to publicly recognize you and thank you for your service many years and continued success down in Utah. And you'll be messed up. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Jennifer?
Nothing to report tonight. Thanks.
Great. We welcome Walt Gallow, our, our interim city attorney. Walt, anything to share with the group?
Soon to be gone interim attorney, hopefully. But I want to add my voice to those who have, thank you, Mayor Hill, for your service to this community. It's, it goes without saying, it's enormous and appreciated. And, and all the accolades you've received tonight are more than well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Scott?
Just thanks for your service, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to our new interim incoming mayor. Nothing else for the council tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Let's go to Jenny.
We, the library received a grant from the state of Oregon a couple months ago. It was a workforce development grant, and we were able to unveil our new Zoom room today, which is a little tiny closet study room, about big enough for two people. But it's, we were able to take the grant to redo that room, and it was pretty exciting. We were at the, literally like vacuuming up five minutes before opening because we had an appointment. Somebody wanted to use that room. There've been people waiting for it to be finished because they wanted to use that room as, as of 11 o'clock. We actually last week had to jockey around a couple of different people who had been waiting to use the room. So, that was really exciting, like a little success in terms of doing something that was at, you know, an immediate need and gratification for people. And then I also wanted to answer a question, Mayor, that you had brought up when we were in the budget meetings, asking about what feedback I'd received from library staff about the classification compensation study. And after that, I received an email from one of the library staff people, an excellent performer who said it's ma, it actually made me want to be a better librarian. And she is an excellent librarian. So, to have that just sort of, you know, above and beyond was really, really great to hear. And I think that has a lot to do, I don't think it's as much a money thing as it is a, a vote of confidence and a morale. And I, I probably shouldn't speak for her. Maybe it is a money thing. But I do think that that's a really important piece of it. You know, the vote of confidence and the, the morale. And, and then to voice, or to echo everybody else, I think, thank you so much, Mayor, for your service and your, your method of service with such, always such positivity and such uplifting. That has been amazing. And I think that that has continued to have an effect on all of us that work for the city and the city council, all that volunteer for the city and the community overall. Thank you for that gift to us.
Thank you, Jenny. Heather?
Yes, so Mayor, I wanted to echo that and say thank you for your leadership, partnership, and support over the last five and a half years with our committees and programs. We're going to miss you, but we're happy to welcome Madam Mayor to our work and our partnership. That's exciting. I wanted to share something with you tonight. It's a part of our program in our Historic Preservation Program. And Noel Amaya, who's here tonight, has been instrumental in this work. So, we are in the process of memorializing 30 of our historic landmarks in our community with these posters. We are working with Nectar Graphics on that, and each poster has a QR code. And the QR code goes to history and stories of each property. Noel's been working with our Associate Planner, Adam Tate, and the Historic Landmarks Committee on this project. And she's been pushing them out over social media over the last couple of weeks, and it's getting a lot of great response. People are really enjoying it. We're getting phone calls. I haven't talked to you about this, Noel, yet, but we're getting a lot of phone calls from people asking if they can buy these posters because they really are appreciating how they're representing our community. So, we're going to see more of these as we roll out. And we are going to, we sent out a mailing to all the property owners to see if they wanted to participate in a walking tour and have sort of lawn signs with these posters in front of their properties. And they're all coming back and saying, yes, we definitely want to be part of that. So, it's getting a lot of very positive response. So, Noel, thanks for your leadership on this project. And these are the most recent ones of Pioneer Hall, Cozine House, and Mack Market. We chose Mack Market because we want to show also how these historic properties can be rehabilitated and moved into future uses. And we thought that that was a great example of that as well.
Thank you, Heather. Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for being so welcoming to me as one of the newer department heads. It really means a lot coming in, and I look forward to working with the new mayor as well.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have any staff online on Zoom? Then I'll have, David, do you want to go get up? And do you have anything to report to the, from the Public Works? I know we had, we had a lunch, didn't we, just recently? Okay, thank you. And Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Public Works Director Anne Pagano is on vacation, celebrating her birthday this week. So, that explains her absence. A couple of items to report. You know that Kylie Bear, our Human Resources Manager, has accepted a job with the Tuolatin Valley Water District. Her last day is the 17th of next month. We expect to bring a part-time interim manager in to help with, primarily with recruitments and support of supervisors. I don't have a specific announcement. We're still working out some of the employment details, but I expect to have that relationship formalized fairly soon. Want to remind members here and members of the public watching that applications for the Ward III vacancy on the council created by Councilor Drapkin's promotion to interim mayor are out and available in a variety of means, particularly on the city's website. Those applications are due at 5:00 p.m. on June 14. And then finally, some advance notice for you. The, the International City County Managers Association, my professional association, our peer organization in the United Kingdom, and Syracuse University London Campus are cosponsoring a symposium on local government practices. I have been invited to present a keynote address during that symposium in July. And I'm taking advantage of the trip across the pond to do some family vacation. And so, I will be out on vacation and sort of a day and a half or two of work on behalf of the professional association from July 2 through July 16. I'll let the council know closer to my departure time your points of contact are. I'll be available occasionally via transatlantic cell phone and email. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Next item is the review, discuss, provide direction on the city's sustainable resources. A part of your packet was information that we asked Jeff and Jennifer to provide to council on, on all of our discussions, I think, as it relates to sustainable revenue. And it was quite a, well, thank you for getting that. Now, we have it in one, one, one complete package that we can take a look at. And so, we'll turn the topic over to our Finance Director, Jennifer, if you'd like to present.
Yes, good evening. So, I actually don't have anything new to present. I do have here, if it would be helpful for folks, I've got three presentations primed, two from April and one from March. If there are slides or information that would be helpful for you all to look back on or focus in on from any of the staff reports, I'm happy to support whatever type of conversation you all are hoping to have this evening.
No, that, I think that's appropriate. I'll, I'll leave that open if anyone wants it. But I, I'd like to set the tone a little bit this evening. This week, interim mayor, Drapkin, myself, we have really kind of put our heads together. And, and looking at, we knew that, we knew that Kelly was, I think she's landing in an hour from her trip to Spain. And so, she's, she will be on the road. She's not with us this evening. And then Counselor Chinawith, we didn't know, wasn't going to be here this evening, but he called, and he had a tough decision to make, a, a family obligation that's a once-in-a-lifetime dealing with graduation. And you know how important those are. So, our, our, our thought would be that, you know, discussion tonight isn't with the full council, and we have all of the information that you need. And, and, and under the direction of our incoming interim mayor, we're going to put a proposal in front of you as council this evening and see if you could support that. And with that being said, Remy, I'm going to turn some time over to you, and then we can get a sense from the council where we want to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everybody present. We are, after, after a lot of discussion tonight, the mayor and I came to a place where we thought perhaps we could suggest to the council a slightly different approach that might address some of our issues, both in trying to bridge some of our funding and then also look at some long-term funding. We had a couple of goals in mind. One is to return the ARPA dollars out of our operating budget, or at least as many of them as possible, in that they don't really achieve the, the end that we, I believe unanimously understand that we need. So, the proposal that we've put together is that in the, in short order, we would convene a small group of policymakers. This would not exceed a quorum. Include representatives from this body, as well as from McMinnville Water and Light, to look for some alignment. My previous conversation with Noel Amaya this week, she said, she, we talked about seeking alignment over always seeking agreement on every, everything. So, trying to seek some alignment based on all of the work that city staff and the Budget Committee have done so far. And come back with the, an, an opportunity to present that more aligned understanding and, and hopefully make an amendment to our, our budget at the June 28 meeting in order to get the, those ARPA dollars out of our operating budget. The second tier of this would be that we do establish some sort of partner task force. It's not a replication of the Budget Committee. It would be specifically engaging a number of our city partners in a open roundtable-type discussion as we pursue some more longer-term funding. One detail that is not in here, because this is a general concept, I hesitated to put too much detail in this, in this slide, lest it be too restrictive of an, of an idea. But the idea would be that in this first part, in this bridge funding, we would be looking for some sort of solution that could be extended for a number of years, three or five years, that would give the council a real opportunity to bring back, or would give, I'm sorry, would give the community an opportunity to engage in some of the dialogue that has been asked that we engage in. And, and then whether ultimately that plan would go to a vote of the people or come back before council. But we would therefore get the ARPA dollars out of the operating budget. We would have, we would have our operating budget covered for the next X number of years, three to, you know, three-ish to five-ish, wherever we could find alignment there. And, and hopefully kind of have bought ourself that time to really focus in on what the strategic plan is demanding of council and, and how we can meet those goals.
So, have an opportunity to take a look at that. Any comments from the council? You know, we've, we've put a lot of time and effort into this and talking to a number of individuals. We, we met with Jeff, and, and Jeff is aware of what we were presenting this evening. But Sal?
I think it's a thoughtful approach and timeline, and I appreciate the, the approach. The only two comments I'd make is that you might want to broaden the, or even combine the two partner task forces into, into one conversation because it's possible that the revenue that you come up with, it's a short-term revenue solution, may also be a long-term revenue solution. So, that's just one thought. I'm not married to that. It's just a suggestion. But in general, I, I agree with what you're trying to accomplish there, and I'll be supportive of it.
Thank you, Sal. Other comments? Go ahead, Deb.
Has there been any discussion as far as a, a number of the bridge gap funding? Are you just talking about the ARPA dollar limit? Or are you talking about the proposed budget?
So, we really shied away from getting into the specifics and more looking at the methodology.
Okay, thank you. Outside of that, I appreciate the process suggestion and look forward to seeing what you come back with and approaching it with an open mind.
Thank you, Adam. Zach, any comments?
I guess a question would be, so, tell me more about council to approve amended budget honor before June 28, 2022.
Well...
What do you mean when you say that?
What I mean is hopefully before, so, if we, we can amend the budget after June 28. However, it's cleaner if we amend the budget in advance of June 28. So, the intent would be to come back and say, we've had these meetings, and I believe we have alignment going forward with this path, whatever that path is, and that we would approve that as part of the budget before June 28 so that our ARPA dollars don't go into this budget. So, once the ARPA dollars go into, once the ARPA dollars are enacted and part of this budget... budget and spending initiates, ARPA dollars may be spent, right? It's not that all 1.8 million dollars, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but ARPA dollars may be spent based on how the monies are spent, right? So if we can approve an amended budget in advance of June 28th that replaces the ARPA dollars, then there's no chance of those ARPA dollars being spent.
So, so what I'm hearing you say is by June 28th, we'll have a proposal that, that covers that ARPA funding that we stuffed in the hole?
That would be the intent. I can't promise any outcome. It's, it's the, it's the method-
And then, and so the goal is to remove ARP off the table and that's it? Or it's to get back to the original not-cut budget?
So I didn't put a total dollar amount in this goal, because I think that that's part of the problem that we've had, is that the, you know, is that we're being very focused on, I, I'm trying to bring the conversation back to the methodology, and how can we have alignment on methodology? I think that the, you know, ultimately, that decision's going to be up to the council in terms of a, a total amount, and the, it's, it's trying to find alignment on methodology of how we can bring dollars. I definitely think it's worth the effort to try to get all of the ARPA dollars out, and then, you know, covering our, I, I don't want to say specifically that we're going for X amount of dollars or Y amount of dollars, because I feel like that is cart before the horse when, when the engagement process is, is what I'm pitching you, sir.
Okay. Well, my honest opinion is I find this just sort of frustratingly vague, and, and still I, I see no path, but I think of, of all of us, I may be with Kelly, and I think we've, we should have had the, the 3.4 via the options presented at early May. And so I, I find this as, as, I find this just frustratingly vague, and I don't know where we're going, and, and I think that's a bad. But if the goal is truly to, at least at the bare minimum, remove the need for ARPA in the budget, then great. I, I think, I think the goal should be before July 1 to restore the original not-cut budget as a bare minimum, is what I think the goal should be. But I also think the goal should be to pass all these and get to 3.4 and start talking about how we're going to build the city back to a meaningful level. So there's my thoughts.
And I'll just give one other thought. There's been much consideration given to the fact that we had our polling results tonight from, for the Fire District, and we've been able to hear the report on that, and how critical I think it is, is to keep that avenue open, because that's an additional 1.5 million if we can be successful with that. And so I think Remy talks a little bit whether that be one, two, three, four years, five years in this bridging, so that we can get the Fire Districting taken care of, and that gives us additional dollars. Those are some of the, again, I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, but those are some of the considerations that this task force will be able to now really zero in and, and build partnerships to get us where we need to go, where we've not been able to go before.
Yeah. I would also add that there's often mentioned a sunset clause, and I just really adamantly oppose that. I'm happy to agree to a rate review, to assess that it's still working functionally, but I think sunset is just taking the word "sustainable" in the revenue discussion and throwing it in the garbage. And so I, I'm not sure what good that does.
Would like to echo the latter point that Zach just made. I, I don't think it's a good idea to put a sunset clause necessarily into the revenue projections. I do think we need to take into account-
Thank you, Zach. In case you're listening at home.
I'll give you two mics.
It's stereo.
Okay, then. No, I, I agree with you, Zach. I, I think that, that putting a sunset clause in doesn't make sense. Putting a rate review or putting a review seems fine to me. I, I think that we need to consider how the first revenue piece that we go after fits in with the Fire Districting.
Any other comments from the council?
I guess, what do you expect as far as meetings and workload for what you're putting together? Is this a weekly meeting? I mean, it's a pretty tight timeframe, so it's got to be a compressed workload.
It's, yeah, it's going to be very tight. It's going to be, I anticipate it being quite time-demanding over the, the next four weeks with at least weekly meetings, is what I would anticipate. And I, I tried not to get too far ahead in the idea until the council spoke as to their interest in pursuing this.
And has Water and Light onboard with that?
Doesn't matter.
I think they would be onboard.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments? So I think what I'll do at this point is kind of get a thumbs up to this approach, this interim approach. Sal? Yes? Adam? Yes? Zach?
Yeah, you, yeah, you know, you know where I stand, and I think we got to get back to that original budget, so if this is how you guys want to take us there, then.
And then we know where, where you are, Remy. So thank you, staff, giving us all the information. And now we will move forward quickly with a, hopefully, June 28th kind of site in what we're going to do, and we'll be back in contact with staff to let us, if we need any assistance going forward with this. But you understand the intact, the, the direction that we want to do is to be able to have ARPA dollars freed up by the 28th of June, have a source of revenue which would be bridge and in a partnershiping with Water and Light and the council, and having some doable types of things at that point. Okay, thank you. That takes us to, this evening, our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have anything taken off of our consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Sal moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 The consent agenda passes unanimously this evening. That takes us to our resolutions, and our first resolution this evening is Resolution 2022-34, Resolution Establishing a New Affordable Housing Fund, Adopting a Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022, and Making Supplemental Appropriations. Again, we had a public hearing on that. Jennifer, if you could just summarize again, and then we can take that to a vote.
So in terms of, we've discussed why we're proposing creating the bud, the new fund, and just to underscore, the authorities for establishing a supplemental budget come out of ORS 294-471, that when a condition at the time of ratifying the previous budget was unknown, it is, an action available to the governing body is to make a supplemental budget appropriation, and that's what this resolution in combination of establishing the fund does.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any, any council discussions or questions that anyone would have?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move Resolution 2022-34.
So we have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-34. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Sal and seconded by Zach. All those in favor, please say, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 2022-34 passes unanimously this evening. That now takes us to Resolution 2022-35, a resolution, approve the city manager to sign an agreement with YCAP or the Navigation Center. And so we'll turn the discussion over to our Planning Director, Heather Richards, to present. Heather?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So in front of you is a resolution that authorizes city managers sign an agreement with YCAP to construct a navigation center at 327 and 329 Southwest Adams Street. That is the two properties that YCAP currently owns on Adams Street. There are two structures on those properties, and they're, the proposal is to rehab both of those structures and then construct an addition that connects the both of them together, so it's one primary structure for this Navigation Center project. To give you some background on this, the, in 2021, the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 2006. That did several different things. One, it declared an emergency in the state of Oregon for the need of emergency shelter to house houseless families and individuals. And then it also declared that, that cities can permit these projects without going through a land use process if it's done within two years of the bill passing. Thirdly, it also just introduced the concept of a navigation center, which is an emergency low-barrier shelter with onsite supportive services, and it provided funding relative to that. So the city of McMinnville, working with Representative Noble, did receive 1.5 million dollars to construct a navigation center here in our community through House Bill 5024. And why that's important is House Bill 5024 does not have timeliness metrics on it, and House Bill 2006 did. So we're not held to the timeliness metrics on House Bill 2006 for the expenditure and construction of the funds, which would have been by June 30 of this year. But we are held to the timeliness of exempting these projects from land use in the emergency declaration in House Bill 2006, which is two years. So we've been working with YCAP. The bill also says if, if the city's going to move forward with an emergency shelter and navigation center, it needs to have an operator that has two years of experience operating and managing these types of facilities, and that it has to meet certain covenants of the law. YCAP is the, the most obvious partner for us in that regard, and we reached out to them to see if they would be interested in partnering with us on this project, and they are. We put together a small committee to start looking at sites around the community as to where this would make sense. That committee looked at about four or five different sites, and in the end concluded that the YCAP site of the two parcels were, were the best site for it in terms of meeting all the covenants that are in the bill, as well as how it impacts neighboring properties. So to do that, what that means is we have money to construct a navigation center, the city, and we'd be constructing on YCAP's property, and then they would be, they would then be the operator. YCAP is not a developer. They don't have experience developing projects. They would like the city, city move forward with the project management of the construction, and then they would take it over and be the operator, and that's the agreement that you have before you tonight. I did provide an amended agreement to you at your seat, a hard copy as well, sent it to you. The lawyers have been working through the language in the past 24 hours to get it to a point where everyone's comfortable with it. What the agreement says is that over the next two years, the city will use their funds to construct this, this naviga, navigation center on that site, and then YCAP agrees to operate it for two years. They have operating funds for two years. It also, the agreement also says that the city will carry insurance for the construction piece of the project, and YCAP will carry insurance for the operational piece of the project. So it sort of spells out the two different roles and responsibilities of the two different agencies as we work through this partnership. When we're done with construction of the project, we will then hand it over to YCAP for ownership, the final, the final product. If you recall, we also have ARPA funds set aside for the operations of the project, and I wanted to point out that this agreement does not address those operational funds. That will be a separate agreement down the road. This is strictly for the construction of the Navigation Center on their property, which moving forward will be called Any Door Place. Any Door is a very important program for, for YCAP. They've, they're operating all the programs under that premise that, that the door is open for people in terms of finding shelter, and so this will be called Any Door Place as their project.
Any questions of Heather? I had an opportunity this week. I meet with Alexandra from YCAP on a monthly basis, and she and I have been discussing the, the success of Project Turnkey and how well they have maintained that property and the program that was intended to be there. And I just, I, I think YCAP is truly in a position today to provide the leadership of, of providing assistance to those that need it. And, and so personally, I think YCAP is the perfect partner for the Navigation Center, and they've shown over the last year what they've been able to do with Project Turnkey. I go by Project Turnkey every single day, and the cleanliness and the orderliness, you couldn't even hope for anything better than what I see on a daily basis there. And then in return, Alexandra says how, 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 how YCAP enjoys working with the city. The city of McMinnville gives them a great amount of support, and she would only hope that other partners could give the kind of report, the support that the city of McMinnville's giving to YCAP. So that's just a, it's, it's not, it's just a feel that we have. So I then were in a position, any, any other discussion? If not, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-35.
Sal moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Sal and seconded by Remy. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying aye. Resolution 2022-35 passes unanimously, five to zero. That takes us to our last resolution, a Resolution 2022-36, a resolution to adopt exemption to the state procurement standards to approve a contract with FFA for a navigation center. And so Heather, I'll turn that over to you to discuss.
Yes, thank you. And, and I was neglectful in saying previously that Bill Kabeizman, who is our interim legal counsel for land use, was the legal review on the previous agreement you just did, because Walt Gallas' office has a conflict of interest, because they represent YCAP. However, Walt has been working with me on this particular resolution. So this is a consideration of a resolution that adopts findings declaring an emergency procurement per Oregon Administrative Rule 137-048-0200, and it's allowed in the authority through ORS 297B.080 in your role, in your role as the Contract Review Board for the city of McMinnville. So the resolution adopts findings declaring the emergency procurement, and then also authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with FFA Architecture for Architectural and Engineering Services related to, to the construction of the navigation center that we just discussed, in an amount not to exceed $280,000. The reason we're bringing this to you as an emergency procurement process is for several reasons. One, per House Bill 2006, there has been an emergency declared in terms of the need for emergency shelter for houseless individuals and families in the state of Oregon, and for them to be built and, and developed and operated within a specific timeframe. We, when we first learned about the funding that we received for the navigation center, started reaching out immediately to architectural firms to see what people's capacity was like. So the, the blessing of ARPA funds is that there are a lot of cities undertaking projects right now. The constraint is we haven't propped up that many more architectural and engineering firms, and so a lot of them are at capacity levels in terms of what they can take on in their workload, and especially within a tight timeframe. So we were finding that nobody was able to actually respond to us if we put out an RFP for this. We were in conversation with several different firms. We finally had a conversation with FFA, and that was over about six months. We finally had a conversation with FFA Architecture, who wanted to bring this type of project into their portfolio. They do do municipal and civic work. In fact, they were the architects on this Civic Hall project. They're familiar with McMinnville. I worked with them in Redmond as well, and so familiar with them in that regard. And so they put together- And so they put together a proposal for us. The proposal they put together for us has a couple of things in it. Their principal and lead architect are donating their hours, so they're donating their services in that regard, and I think it's, I have it in my staff report what that amounts to. It amounts to about $11,000. And then they went to all of their subs, and then they're also providing us with a nonprofit billable hourly rate. And then they went to all their subs and asked them to do the nonprofit billable hourly rate as well, so we could get this as reduced as possible. We are asking them to do construction management through the construction process, and that's because we just don't have the capacity at the city to do that as we work this project through, especially in the timeframe in which we need to do it. So I shared with you previously that the House Bill requires us to get this done within two years, and so we're, we expect it to be about 18 months to go through design and construction and get to a certificate of occupancy on this, and so we are working under a very tight timeframe in that regard. So we recommend approval of the resolution, and that would allow us to sign the contract, and then we will move forward with the project based on that.
I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 22-36.
Let's see if we have any questions first. Any discussion among the council? Hearing none, we have a motion from Remy on Resolution 2022-36. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Remy and seconded by Sal. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2022-36 passes unanimously, five to six, this evening.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Go ahead, Sal.
Heather, if the council's agreeable, I really appreciated that the architectural firm has donated their hours and has made those requests for nonprofit rates for their subs and for the firm itself. Can we send some specific expression of gratitude from the city for them doing that? I'm not sure if there's anything we can do specifically, but I think council just...
Yeah, I can forward on to them, that you stated that tonight. I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot of them over the next 18 months, so there'll be other opportunities in which to have that dialogue with them, too.
Yeah, it's very, very heartwarming to see companies like that step forward to kind of help try and solve a serious problem.
And I should share with you also, we originally started working with Marcia. She really wanted to be involved in this process, our local architect. And after a lot of discussion, and there was the recognition that she didn't have the capacity within her firm to do it the way that it really needs to be done in terms of all the complexities, but she was also at the table with that same heart for it.
Thank you, Sal, and thank you, Heather. That takes us to the conclusion of our council meeting this evening. Just in closing, I just give my heartfelt thanks to each and every one of you. What an opportunity for me to serve as your mayor. I have grown tremendously. I love learning, and this has been one major learning school for me. And thank you for putting up with the personality that is mine and the attributes are mine that are mine. I've got really good traits, but I have some that are tough. I'm so analytical, it's hard to make decisions sometimes. I thank you, though, for accepting me and just helping me be the best I could be so I could give the best that I know how back to this community. And I'd like to thank personally Jeff for his mentoring and his leadership. I appreciate that. Department heads, okay, I'm telling you, you're the best in the state, okay? I've been around a long time. I've traveled quite a bit, and we've got the very best. And council, what a privilege it has been to serve with this group. We're so diverse compared to other councils, but we're doing it, and we're getting along, and we're listening. And it has been a long and hard road, but I can truly say thank you for bringing your individuality to the council. We're better for it, and once we get this long-term, sustainable revenue taken care of, I think everybody's going to be so much, much happier. So again, thank you, and anyone that's listening, thank you. I'm going to do my last official act tonight, and that's to give the gavel over to the new interim mayor, and it is 8:35. And Remy?
Meetings are...
Thank you.[1754.26]